Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting for the Board of Selecton, January 27, 2020, 7:00 PM to order. Ask if you please rise to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Start the roll call.
All right, Daggie?
Ms. Hendrick?
Thank you.
Item C, approve the January 21 meeting minutes. We have all of those in our packet.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for January 21.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, public comment. Anybody have an issue, comment, or concern at this time?
Shawn Peterson. Hi, Mr. Daggie. I have a comment. We have a snow removal ordinance from the sidewalks.
That was something that was proposed a while ago. We'd like to... You want to bring that back up? We can't?
Well, it's already... There is an ordinance.
Right.
We just can't make it stick. The problem I have is our own town hall has a snow pile on a sidewalk. We shouldn't have that.
Lots?
Naomi Smith, Plainfield. I have a concern that was brought to my attention over the last few days by a resident. There was a board selecting a meeting, a special one on the September 9th, and unfortunately, I was not able to attend. And I guess there was a discussion to appoint someone to the Ethics Committee.
Mm-hmm.
I did go back and review the minutes and watched the video. I'm concerned because in the video, I'm assuming the reason why it was given a table and courtesy to the DTC committee was because of the supposed misproper posting on the website. Am I correct in that?
Correct. It was listed as Republican, and we find out later on it was actually Democrat position.
Okay, well, that's interesting because I have screenshots going back into early November of our town website for the boards because I was interested in some of the appointed positions, and it was not misproperly posted.
I saw prior to that, and it was listed as Republican.
And I received an email correspondence from you going back to July, and in the email correspondence, it's listed as one Democrat, one unaffiliated. And you said that you got that information off of the website in July.
Mm-hmm.
And I had spoke with Lisa then, and she said that that was correct. And then I spoke with Lisa this morning because I was concerned, and she said that she did have a thought that being not posted correctly. I did place a call into Kyle and left a message. I hope he hasn't gotten back to me yet. I know the schedule is busy. So I just have concerns with that because everything that I have doesn't show any time it was ever not properly posted. So I don't understand. When did you see it?
Last summer.
And when I asked Lisa this morning, she said that she did not... She was not aware of it being improperly posted. But I know in the video, you had stated that you've gotten clarification from her. So...
She wasn't aware of it, and we talked about it briefly.
That's not what she told me this morning. So that's concerning. And like I said, I have emails going back from May and July.
And at that meeting, that was the December 9th, the DTC chair stated that she did not know that it was a Democrat position either.
Wow. That's interesting because, like I said, I'm just wondering how come in my correspondence with you, back and forth between July 2nd, you clearly state it, listed on the front page of the town website, seat of Ethics Committee opening. And when I go to it, it says, "Both terms and 1/4/2021. One must be a Democrat, one can be in the party." And then a month later, two days later, on July 8th, Ms. Hendrich appointed Adam Collet, and he's a Republican. So that left one Democrat seat open. And then, like I said, another one in May. April had one out. Same thing. It was listed never. And that came from the website. And then even going as far back as almost a year, on the Secretary of State's website, it's listed with two vacancies. So like I said, I find this rather interesting that all of a sudden it was somehow improperly posted, and I have screenshots going back to November 8th. So... Not quite sure about that. And I know that Ms. Johnson reached out to me, and she asked me if I know anything about it. And I said I can look through records. She sent me some of the correspondences. That was concerning. And like I said, the fact that Lisa confirmed this morning that... And even on July 3rd, I sent you an email, and in my email correspondence to you, I had let you know that I had talked to Lisa, and it was a Democrat opening ending on the 1/21 term. So... I mean, I might have taken on what might have taken place here, but I just think that's very disheartening.
Anybody else? Kind of concern for public comment? Hearing none. Go to new business. Item number one, consider an act on the tax refund as requested by the tax clerk, totaling $952.47 as follows. Ally Financial, 16332; Ally Financial, 34830; Toyota Lease Trust, 23885; and Toyota Lease Trust, 202 even. Have that information in your packets. Questions?
I'll make a motion to act on the tax refunds totaling $952.47 as follows. Ally Financial, 16332; Ally Financial, 34830; Toyota Lease Trust, 23885; and Toyota Lease Trust, $202.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item two, discuss an act on Board of Selecton official appointment to the town clerk. So that one is we voted for the town clerk, but in reviewing, Lisa brought this to my attention about the Section 8 in item C of the Plainfield Town Charter, the appointment of the department head. So technically, we voted her as the town clerk, but we're going to entertain a motion this time to accept Barbie Gardner as the town Plainfield Town Clerk and Department Head of Clerk's Office and to serve in her official terms starting February 3rd, 2020, and ending in 11/2 of 2021. Then the first day of official... Official takes documents as town clerk of Plainfield will be February 4th of 2020.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Have a motion in a second?
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So there's... The next parts are multiple pieces because you have to do one before the other. So the first thing would be to consider an act on a resolution to amend the Plainfield Town Charter. This is item number three. So we've been talking about doing a town charter, and people have been talking about coming forward with a few ideas. So that would be the first step of it. So if you wanted to entertain that, we could do that tonight.
I'll make a motion to act on the resolution to amend the Plainfield Town Charter.
Motion.
In a second, Doc.
In a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it goes to item number four, which is consider an act on resolution to create a Charter revision commission and adding members to that said commission. So in item four, the first part would be the authorization for appointing members, and the second part is a list of all the different people who have been putting their name forward to be on charter revision. So what we have is...
Seven.
Three. Yeah. Six and seven. So there's four ways to take this. You can make the motion to the authorization for appointing members, and then talk about individual after that if you'd like. Or you could take the whole thing and read through the list, or accept all seven people who came forward.
So I'll make a motion to act on the resolution creating Charter revision commission and adding members to the said commission.
Okay. The motion's been made.
I'll second.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The second part is you've got a list of the seven people. You should have put forward their consideration.
And you're going to accept them. I know you can have up to fifteen.
Yeah, I think fifteen's rather a lot. But seven is a good starting number to give the start to it, and then we can actually have a schedule to meet with everybody to get holes getting put up together. I put something together tentatively for a schedule, but I really... They should be going on their own dates anyway, so we'll just give them the guidelines of what they can go forward with.
But you have to make sure that dates meet with the state to make sure that you're following the procedure.
Yeah, I've already asked Lisa. She's the one helping to put that together. But I do want to go still with the state of Connecticut just to show all the dates that they have and make sure there's no pitfalls.
Yep. Okay.
So in that item...
So do you want to make a motion to just appoint the whole seven, or do you want to...
I think we do the whole seven, just to name them out and put that in the motion. So I would entertain a motion to accept the following people in on the Charter Revision Commission. That would be Bill Knight, June Gaglin, Trav Harmon, Virginia San Pietro, Pat Reed, Linda Jardins, and Dan Ray.
I'll make a motion to accept these seven people onto the Charter Revision Commission.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six shows item five, consider an act on reappointment to Economic Development Commission. What you see in...
No conservation.
Oh, sorry. I'm still on it. Tax. Conservation. There is one change to the way it printed off for you, and that is the ultimate position is not requested at this time. So we're looking for... These are two expired terms of Conservation Commission that need to be motioned and approved so they can continue service, and they're both three-year terms. One is unaffiliated. That's Nick Anderson. And the other is a Republican listed as Eugene Goss. So the start dates for all these terms would be starting tonight, January 27th, 2020, and ending on January 2nd of 2023. Entertain a motion to accept those two individuals?
So I'll make a motion to reappoint Nicholas Anderson and Eugene Goss with their terms starting on 1/27/20 and ending on 1/2/20 to the Conservation Commission.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number six then goes to Economic Development. I will say at this moment, I did receive an email today that she's drawing her name. So only had one person, but they were drawing a name at this time, so there's no action to be taken there.
So could you forward that email so they can put it in?
And that would bring us to item number seven, which is consider an act on reappointment to the Housing Authority. Again, some of these terms have expired, therefore we need to go forward with... There's one Democratic term for the Housing Authority that needs to be motioned and approved, and that's a five-year term, and that's Gloria Bergeron, Democrat, term starts January 27th, 2020, ends January 6th, 2025.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Gloria Bergeron to the Housing Authority.
I'll second that.
Motion is made in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we tried the first time through with the special town meeting that we were looking to have a forum. We just missed out on the forum, so we're looking to bring a date forward. If you look in the calendar, I think that to put it out there on February 6th, what I would propose to do, it's a Thursday. There's nothing else that interferes with it that night, so probably the same thing. And this time, we're just going to see if we can get Kyle to use the Nixle system to see if we can promote that particular meeting. So that would be the second go-round of that. So we need to have a motion to put forth a town meeting date for the $64,000 reduction to the funding to the Board of Education for February 4th, 7:00 PM.
So I'll make a motion to set the town meeting date to vote on the $64,000 reduction of funding to the Board of Ed for Thursday, February 6th. What town?
September, February 6th, at 7:00 PM, sorry.
At 7:00 PM, Town Hall Auditorium.
Motion's made.
I'll second.
A second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So number nine. We were looking to put together a group of individuals who would call the Permanent Building Committee, or would be calling the Permanent Building Committee. The first step of that, obviously, was we put the information out there. We did receive three names that came back. For those interested, we're looking for people who have building experience, looking for building in the grounds person, someone maybe with a building inspector position, head of maintenance, HVAC contractor, electrical contractor, maybe even the fire marshal for inspections might be helpful. So we started it out, and there are actually three names that came forward. You've seen your packet.
There are only two.
Got two. I asked for a third. Yeah. All right. The third one is Mike Cat. He has the electrical background of engineer. I can get you the follow-up for the email after the meeting on that. But he was the third person that came forward.
Master electrician.
Master electrician, yeah. The other one was Ed Corson, and he'd like to be... Have an opportunity to go on because of his background. And plumbing. We also have Shawn Peterson, licensed HVAC technician. So he would be another great addition onto the board of committee.
So what is the actual purpose of the building committee?
Okay. The idea would be that we'd like to be able to kind of catalog all of the town buildings and know how old is the roof, how old is the heating system, electrical. When the last time it was a major upgrades electrical, to get an idea of tying into the five-year capital plan. We're looking at all of the buildings and then come back and say, well, here's the ones we saw as priorities for the buildings of the town. And that way, when we go to the five-year capital, we can say, these two roofs, more than anything else that's out there. And because of their expertise, they can actually do the inspections on it. Makes it a little easier for the five-year capital to proceed. So that was the intent of it. We'd have also help and support with the Board of Education to do the same thing and put it all together.
So they'd also do the schools?
Absolutely, in conjunction with the school system. Because I know they're doing a 2025 program now, so that would be a big help.
How many people would you like to see on this?
Well, I would like to see six or seven because I think if you look... If you hit all your... All your high list, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, and I know we have another person that is... He's not in there. Bob Kerr put his papers in the other day at local meeting. So he's a building inspector. He would know a lot more of what goes on and what to look for in general sense. So he was the other person that... There were actually four people there.
So I guess my other question would be because they are business people.
Mm-hmm.
They're going to actually come in and look at our heating system and our electrical and our roof. Now, would we pay them because...
Volunteer program.
And you said they're all licensed and insured and bonded? And how soon would you like to start that?
Well, I'd like to get it going right away only because we're already in the midst of the budget seasons. As soon as they have an opportunity to go out there and take a look at some of the buildings, it would be great.
So will there be a town employee with them when they go out to look? So would our maintenance? I mean, we have our own maintenance people, so...
I have a maintenance person from each that supports each of the buildings, including that of the Board of Education, to have their maintenance people with it.
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting that last time we discussed it with the VOE and the Pinkians and Ron Roberts and people, you know? They build it its best. So do we want to start this now?
Well, that's up to you, of course, if you guys want. If you want to consider it, that'd be great.
So I guess my next question would be...
Okay.
Because I look at the whole picture. So if there's an electrical issue, and you have, like in Mike Parkett Electric, when the bid process comes in for that, is that going to be a conflict of interest?
We'd have to have... Ask him to recuse himself from actually bidding because of his timing.
So any other...
They're just on inspection.
Just want to make sure.
Any other questions or concerns or insight?
Public question?
Question, please. Do you... It sounds like you want to have them actually go in and evaluate the systems more than just double-check and oversee that the thing... It sounds like you're asking for more than what it really should be. That group should be more like an advisory committee, which that helps. You get suggestions from your maintenance staff, and that group will be the ones that go in and say, yeah, this is a priority. It kind of helps decide how severe the problem is.
The maintenance staff has...
More so than just evaluating.
Well, maintenance staff has just so much expertise.
Correct.
So if it was an HVAC system, and they're thinking that there's an issue... I'll give you an example here. We have an outdated heating system. What's our best next step to go forward, and whether it is evaluating how bad the current heating system is, to make an evaluation from there? We'd probably ask for your...
That would be your contractor's job to evaluate the system, and they would bring, in my opinion, they would bring that information or send that information to you, who would forward to the building committee, and then that building committee would sit down and look at the paperwork.
Old and how outdated certain things are.
Correct.
So if you can gather some of that data to then say, well, right off the bat, you know that certain things need to be done, we can call somebody in for evaluations.
Right. Okay.
So all that information should be here, though?
Right.
In our offices.
Our maintenance staff should have that.
And you look around. Sometimes you don't find it all right there. So I'd like to have it all in one book.
Each building should have, or each department building. When I say department, I mean, like the highway garage should have their own evaluation, and there must be a great maintenance person that takes care of stuff up there.
On a great high level, though, is the problem.
Didn't we have a building committee in the past?
We used to have one. It was for the last thing that was done, which was the new high school. So it was a building committee for the high school only, and they were the ones who were putting together the pieces to get it going. They were also...
Do you know who started that?
Boy, that was probably either Tom Galatin when he was in office.
How effective would you say that that board was?
Well, those were some of the professionals in that field. I mean, not going to catch everything, but they did a pretty good job of finding all the concerns. It was actually a couple of issues that was brought up during the meeting that they voted on, and in hindsight, they should have listened to the first person, but it did bring up some interest in discussion.
And now, like what Shawn's describing, like if they don't act as more of an advisory, but if you... I don't know how exactly you said that, Shawn, but then if something happened, would there be liability on the town from that?
Not for the board.
No, no, that's not what I mean. So like, let's say you have this board, and let's say with our heating system in the town hall, they said, okay, it's a priority, but our capital improvement didn't allow for us to be able to do that. And then we did take care of it. And then, let's say, the building burned out. Okay, so I'm sure we have insurance, but then would there also be a component of possible negligence because we were advised and we didn't do it?
We kind of get those issues all the time. The Board of Education, just them along, they've been dealing with the heating system issue for well over 24 years, 25 years, and it still hasn't come to fruition to update it. There's a plan in place right now, so they would like to do that, not this coming budget season, but the next. So that's a lot of things that are impacted here where how much money are you going to be able to take from the general fund, and what is... Would the public be able to vote for? You can explain to people what needs to be fixed, but sometimes there's just not enough...
Right, money.
Money behind it.
I mean, I just, like I said, I'm just wondering what the success, like how you defactored the success of the previous building, what that was about.
Yeah, and that was just for the high school. That's what...
There was also more recent roofing building committee.
Right.
That were disbanded, I think, right about the end of Paul's term, when they put the last roof on.
Just for roofs. Yep.
Correct. Maybe some of those people might be...
Interested?
Possible people to approach.
I would think that would be a good group.
These people is telling you, you know, they don't want to give you the money in town. Or telling your kids ain't going to go to school, and then the town's going to have bigger problems, right? Because if you are, don't let the kids go to school because of a heating problem, right? Especially in high school now, we're talking. We're going to tell these parents, hey, your kids can't go to school because we ain't got no heat. We can't put no heat in because your people in the town won't support us. That's, you know, that's about the bottom line.
Trying to give as much information to the public as possible.
Right.
Plus them evaluate what they're going to be able to afford.
Right. Because they're going to have to have heat, or the town has to borrow money, or, you know, lay people off fire. In my opinion, you can call it whatever you want, but they're still going to have to have the school.
I think this is a reason for a building committee, rather than just relying on the maintenance department of each building, the building committee is going to catch things before they get to an emergency situation, where a maintenance guy may not catch that.
I need you always buy that at that point. I need you always buy at that point.
What point?
Emergency.
As far as the heating systems. But I'm just saying, for a building committee, they're going to catch things that maintenance will not catch, and we can take care of them quicker, before the emergencies, yes. If money allows.
Maybe you all look for some maintenance people.
Yeah, but maintenance doesn't know HVAC. Maintenance doesn't know roofing. They... You need specialists. This is why we're trying to put the committee together.
But I think, again, it's an advisory. It's not going to be... They're not going to know our buildings. We should know our buildings. We know what needs to be done. So you just have to make very clear that this is an advisory committee. It's not to go in and evaluate because when you put in a heating system and you go out to bid, you could have five to nine companies come in. So really, a building committee does not do that. So they really are just advisories. So you have a heating company come in, five to seven companies. You receive bids from them. So what you're saying is the building committee is going to look at those bids?
They would... No, no, not the bids. Bid process would start basically if, let's say, a HVAC system was required to be placed into this building. And it's basically on your help and support by saying, these are the reasons why I think it should. And then they come back to us, and then we go out to bid based on priority of the lead.
Given the expertise in each of the candidates' respective fields, would we not be probably eliminating, based on the criteria of conflict of interest, if we're populating this entire committee of people, obviously local to the town, vendors that then would probably be disqualified from these bidding processes that might otherwise have been a prudent choice or been able to make competitive bids?
Well, let's take a quick look, then, at the people. Ed Corson, plumbing. Would he bid on his own, knowing that he's actually coinciding there's a problem? Knowing that he's actually, once saying there's a problem with the plumbing, he'd be asked ahead of time not to, to bid on that process.
Has that information been communicated throughout this process?
I did speak to him briefly about that. Any other comments, concerns?
Well, the only thing I want to mention is I do, I, I'm finding things in that pile. And I do work for a contractor that does work for this town. But I do not work on any school buildings in this town. I am assigned to an account in Groddan, and that's the only place I go. I touch on all the school buildings here. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Right, but what you're saying to us, there's an HVAC issue here, what, what are we going to do to fix it? We need to have some specs of how we're going to approach it.
Right.
So like the Hitachi systems that are outside, we have one Hitachi, I think, here, for downstairs and the judge's office. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mitsubishi. That's, that's the one we'd have to, one of the ideas that we would come back and consider, if that's the idea that we're going to go forward with to heat it. Try to keep the cost as low as possible. Would it fit for all the, the spaces we have in the town? I'm sure the hall would not be able to accommodate that, so we'd have to think of something else for that. There's a lot of factors in that, so...
Correct. But I just want to make sure that he's aware that I am a contractor. I'm a, I work for contractors that work on town buildings.
So then they really would have to evaluate, because you're saying, they're going to say whether that would be a good fit for the town. So they really do have to get into the nitty gritty and evaluate. Because they can't just look at that and have the specs and feel like that will work. I mean, any heating company can do that. Because it goes by square footage and how many watts it puts out. So...
Because it comes to a point of evaluation where they just can't go any further. I mean, you can give us some options of what we can do.
I, I would think it's just basically trying to look out for the town's interests. That's, that's the whole purpose of that board, is to help make decisions based on building systems that you don't necessarily know about. So you're, you're looking for expertise from citizens that have... I have a skin in the game because it's my tax dollars is doing the repair. So I want what's best for the town because it's best for me ultimately. So that's the only thing, that's the only reason I, I could see residents wanting to do this. Because to put your name on the line, that's not the way, it, it can't work that way. I, I can't come in here legally and take apart a system and evaluate it completely. We, we can't do that unless you're actually working for the town. So you, you can come in and look and say, oh, yeah, that pipe's leaking. Yeah, well, they want to do this. You can look at that and make a decision, or help make a decision, as to how, how, how big a priority it is. Not necessarily take it apart and re-pipe it. It's, you can't do that unless you're on staff or, or doing work for the town directly.
So one of the helper, helping issues here, I think, is we have a building inspector, former building inspector, who can get more detail to us and help us out.
I think, I think it's a good idea to get the committee started, and the committee needs to sit down and talk with you also, what your expectations are, and try to create a compromise for what's realistic. What we legally can do. We're very bound as to what you touch legally, because if I take apart something, I'm responsible, and I can't do that. But I'll look at something and tell you, yes, that's a good fit, or no, that's a terrible idea. In case of the school where you, your, the heating system isn't adequate, because it was built, it was built to solid standards.
Right. I appreciate the input that you're giving, because I think, sort of from the start of this whole process, was looking at our five-year capital and seeing, we don't know, we don't know HVAC, we don't know all electrical work, but we rely on people to give us that information. And I think having a more professional look at that would be very helpful. So it really puts more values behind a five-year capital, is when we prioritize.
And I think, I think Robbie Kerr is a great candidate in this, this committee. He knows these buildings very well.
This committee would save us money in the long run anyway, wouldn't it? If we don't have to pull a contract to look at somebody, something and say, oh, you better take care of this. If they could do that...
No, you can't. You still have that...
Yeah, but if you're, if you're in an advisory position, and you look at this pipe that's leaking, and you come back to us and say, I, I think you need to problem, and it needs to be looked at by...
But they could, they could also, like you said, walk through buildings as a group, look around and say, why isn't that window fixed? And point stuff like that out.
That's exactly what happens.
Sometimes what happens is maintenance staff, you get to be, I do maintenance daily, you get, you're used to seeing it, you kind of just...
Complacent?
You just, yeah, you get complacent on it. And that's what happens. So you're just kind of helping to point out issues. Well, why haven't you fixed that? Why do we have blue shingles over here? Why aren't them in there? Just little things.
My first request to our maintenance people would be, give me a full list of each building that you work on, all the things you see.
Yep.
I guess that would be a good start to say, let's just look at these.
Correct. And, and your maintenance staff should have an idea, too, when roofs were done and stuff like that. They should already have these lists that you're talking about, trying to, they should already have them, in all honesty. If you're paying somebody as a head maintenance custodian or head maintenance person, they should have that stuff.
That's why I'd like to put the book together to make it so every building has that list.
Okay.
And they may have the information we don't.
Correct.
We don't know. It's a board to move this forward or not, because they haven't told us, or...
Well, that's something for Kevin to get on and hold on.
So I will make a motion to add an advisory building committee for the town buildings.
Okay, motion made to add the committee?
Do you want to add to that motion, the four people to add to it?
Well, right now, we're just...
You have four people to add to the committee?
It's not to add members, though. It's just to form the building committee.
Yeah, we can do that. In the next month, we can come back with, now that we've got it out there, what public?
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 10 is discussing adding an ad hoc Census 2020 Complete Count Committee. Now, you see around the state of Connecticut that they're doing a lot of this, getting, trying to get our committee started. And we'd really like to push this item because it helps, when you're looking out for monies from the state and from federal governments, you get a correct number. So...
Have you had any interest in anybody getting on that meeting?
Well, one person. One person has come forward, and I really want to push it out there to the public, asking if they would consider being on this committee. It is important. We'd like to start getting this going right away. If we start the committee, I'll make all the calls to help out and support, try to get more people on it. And at this time, we do have one person who would end up being the chair. I kept on looking over you. I'm sorry. You would be my one person to start with. And again, anybody else would like to be on the Census Committee would be fantastic, but we do have one definitely.
So you made a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to start a complete count committee for Census 2020?
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? I will talk to you afterwards about the intent of what we're looking to get, so appreciate that. So motions made with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so our gentleman who is our highway supervisor was supposed to be here because he was going to push this item. Push box. This is whatever the, the board's pleasure is. What this was, was a widened, um, plow with a bomb cap to help out in snowstorms. He looked it up, and he found one that he was able to get for $5,400. But in order for us to even consider that, it has to go to the Board of Selecting first, then goes to the Board of Finance. I thought he would have been here tonight to support and discuss it, to give you more detail to it.
And just to be clear, this is only for them to use at the highway garage. It's not something that you can use on the road or... So, because we did have a little bit of discussion right before I left. And it's just, it would cut down the time, is what I was told, at the highway garage, because it's bigger than their block that blowed up. If you have a winter like this winter, you really don't need it. But, you know, just so you know that it's not for the streets. Actually, it's only for the...
You see it on all these big paper dealers and stuff a lot.
Yep.
You know, it's just...
Big parking lots.
Yeah, right. It's an attachment goes on the following...
On bomb cap, yep.
Right, yeah.
My question is, this is non-budgeted?
Correct. Because it's non-budgeted, John approached me and he said, well, we did take some money in from the items that were sold in auction at the highway department. And the share of their monies that they were able to acquire was about $30, almost $36,000. So that's why he said, would we be able to go back to the Board of Finance and ask them for a portion of that? Because it went back right directly to the general fund. We've spoken briefly to the Board of Finance about that, and it would be an option with them. So it's your pleasure. What you'd like to do with this?
I think I was looking at their numbers, too. Their budget, they're still, some of their items in their budget, they're still... At the end of the budget season, they'll have money left over. So maybe it's something, because this winter is kind of a slow winter, that we wait until the budget closes for the end of the budget season. And if in their budget, they have money, that maybe we could do it then, instead of taking money from the money that came in from the auction that they had there.
So it's a lot of time in the year before the end, okay.
Just a suggestion.
I think that's appropriate. So at this time, where, was no action to be taken on that item? Okay. You do have near packet item number 12, which is a series of line item transfers. I'll explain the, the process here. I was, went to the last Board of Finance meeting and explained, going through the budget this year, I noticed that we're down on a couple of items. We want to make sure we do, do right by then, we're not coming to them at the last minute and giving a whole big list of line item transfers. Seeing what we were up against so far, I would make a proposal at this point to say that we are short on the legal notices for the selectance items. And all of these items I've mentioned so far, up to a certain point, would be coming from one item. And that would be a 10610224, which is the highway salary. At this point, we have not hired in a highway supervisor, and I would like to hold off on doing that until the end, well, through this, this budget season. And doing so, it puts us at about $80,000 between the salary and the benefits that we're going to offer. So that's why we have a little bit of money to move line item transfers. The first one, the selecting legal notices, 106203-10. I would ask in the request for $4,000 from the highway salaries, and that line item was, again, 10610224, to the legal notice advertising $4,000. And the election workers, they're going to be short only because they have had a, uh, there was a primary, and it was also going to be coming up this year, is going to be a, a primary for the national election for the Democrats. So they're going to be short, and that's why I'm requesting $10,000 from the highway salary, again, of 10610224, to the election workers of 10610320.
Is that something, Kevin? Because I know just the two years I was in, that always comes pretty close. Is that something during the budget season, maybe you could increase a little bit?
Next year, absolutely. Yeah, I looked at it already, increasing it. And I know the last two years, it went from 30 to 25 and stayed at 25. But because with so many different things going on for this national election, we really kind of need that one. But yes, in next year's budget, I already bumped that a little bit. Next one up is the building inspector. There's a relocation, which took place earlier. And because it expended all of the monies, we're actually over expended. We normally like $1,000. We're going to, again, bump that up, too.
That was prospects, too, right?
Yeah, yep. So what I'm asking for is 416057 from the highway salaries, line item again of 10610224 to the relocation of 10621432. The next one up is, we have been training the town clerk, the new town clerk, with our current town clerk, and that's what we talked about a little while ago, about the turnover there. So there's a town clerk department head position of 106101-18. So we're really just paying at this point our new town clerk for the time that she was coming in. So there'll be 25, 2544, 25 from highway salaries, again, 10610224, to the department head of 106101-18. And the next one up is building inspector vehicle expense. As you know, before, we had expended monies for the new vehicle. It wasn't new, but it was a used vehicle, and the expense overrun was $17,258 from highway salaries, again, of 10610224, to the vehicle expense to pay that money. So we become even in that line item. And that is a vehicle expense, 10622432. The grand total there brings us to $37,96282. I separated it out because police chief had said he had a few things he wanted to transfer. He gave me a separate email on that, and they go as follows. He had police training memberships of $15,000 from the police salaries of 106102-30, to training memberships of 10-621330, of the amount of $15,000. And the second one was the police uniform allowance of $400, from a sick day incentive of 106100-30, to uniform allowance, which is 106108-30. Total there was $15,400. So the grand total between the two was 53, 362, 82.
But the police department, that's coming from within its own department.
Right.
So they're just, you know, with the money around.
We just wanted to make sure that the Board of Finance knew exactly why line item transfers were occurring.
So we have to make a motion to let the Board of Finance, for their approval. So I'll make a motion to send the line item transfers to the Board of Finance for review.
Okay.
Motion second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we go to other. And so I've been in contact with the Board of Finance, making sure that they understood we will come forward with a quarterly. So it's a little easier for them to do it. And it was only because it wasn't, if there's anything else...
I wasn't doing a quarterly.
Of course, the first quarter won't be that bad, but that definitely was something, if we see it spiking, we'll definitely talk to you about that and bring it forward.
And you'll make the request to have department heads for those respective departments...
To, to reach out to you at that meeting.
Yeah, at that Board of Finance meeting. Yes, that'll be our next regular meeting.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other items? Hearing none, none. I ask for a, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.